Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting into order. I'd like to welcome all of you here. Those of you by way of television. This time we have a roll call. So raise your hand if you're present. Thank you all for present. We're gonna have the approval of the agenda at this time.
I should do a praise.
Second.
Has been moving properly, second that we approve the agenda. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. All opposed. Before we get into the sheriff and the detention center, I'm gonna ask our manager to come forth. I think he has some information that he want to share with us, reference to the health.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Traditionally, we try to the next morning answer questions that you had posed the day before. And we have one thing ready to go. I think some of the things we answered yesterday during the course of the workshop, but we still have other things that we're still working on. But if the clerk will pass out, we've got a comparison chart to answer. We're trying to answer Commissioner Coulson's question on the health plan benefits as we compare Pitt County's health plan against the state plan. And when this comes to you, you'll see on the bottom line, the actual monthly cost. And I can annualize that for you and then show you the benefit structure tier, the difference between the different plans. I'll wait till that gets around to the, all the commissioners. So again, this is a health plan benefit comparison chart. The first column is the benefit coverage, the different items that are included, primary care visit, the costs, special visit costs, the deductible, the deductible for family max, out-of-pocket max for individual, same thing for family, hospital services, ER, urgent care, pharmacy, and then if the plan includes dental vision. So with the county, obviously, we have a 90-10 plan. So under the 90-10 plan, 90% of the in-hospital services are covered. You can see the monthly cost is $626, annualized, that's $7,512. The big difference between the county plan and the state plan, whether it's 80-20 or 70-30, and employees have the option to take an 80-20 or 70-30 plan, is that we actually offer the dental vision as part of our plan, which is an annual reimbursement up to $650 once they submit receipts. And actually, we, for every $2 that are, in a basic form, every $2 that are submitted, they get a dollar back. That's very much simplification of the plan. Under the state plan, big difference there, you can see the, again, going down to 80-20, you can see that there's no dental vision. You can see the out-of-pocket max for a family is $14,300 versus our $9,000. You can see the out-of-pocket max for an individual is $6,850 versus our $4,500. And then the other minor differences. If you look at the state 70-30 plan, the out-of-pocket maximum for a family is $23,244 compared to our $9,000. The out-of-pocket max for an individual is $7,748 compared to our $4,500. And if you annualize that, that cost, the monthly cost is $479, annualized is $5,0748. So we have a, I'd say we have a very good, solid plan that I think serves the workforce well. And I think we've managed the cost. We have been able to hold the, for the most part, hold the increases back on the plan by tweaking the plan, tweaking the deductibles, tweaking the pharmacy co-pays. And as we showed you yesterday, we, the plan is in good shape right now. And for a self-funded plan, we just feel it's moving forward very, very well. So just wanted to bring that to you and ask for any questions.
I'd like to say that if you, as a state person, you pay the extra money for the vision, so if you look at it, it really balances out about the same with the two when you add that amount to the state plan that you pay for vision, because I do buy the state vision as well.
Okay. All right. If there's no other question or comments, we'll ask the sheriff to come for his presentation.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come and share my budget presentation. Ms. Huggins, I wanted to thank you for having that chance to congratulate you. And thank you for volunteering to serve and be willing to serve as a county commissioner and serve your citizens. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Everybody else, good morning. And thank you again for allowing me to come. We just do an opening here, you know, our responsibilities. We like to cover what our responsibilities are, remind everybody, remind everybody hours of 24-hour days, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Our job is to protect the property, protect lives and property, respond to citizens' calls. We treat our officers, officers are told to treat our citizens with dignity and respect. We try to conduct a thorough investigations and bring justice to our victims and families. We also are tasked with holding prisoners for the state and federal court system, as well as courthouse security as well. You know, our job every day is to figure out how we can continue making our citizens safe. My next slide, agency workload and performance for county 2016. Y'all do have a copy of my presentation, right? Okay, I'll make sure you did. Demands for service. We received approximately 4,140 applications for purchase of gun permits. This actually reflects an increase from last year. Generally, we see a trend during a presidential election year. Oftentimes, people hurry to get applications, not knowing what the outcome may be, or the way the leadership may look at farms, or the right to be able to possess the farm. So I knew, here we have our numbers here for concealed carry. Actually, we may be down just a little bit on concealed carry permits. But remind you, our revenues, when the minute we talk about our revenues, generally, to obtain a concealed carry, that application is $90. Forty-five goes to the state, forty-five to the county. Every five years, the law requires that you have to do a renewal. And the renewal fee is $80, forty-five to the state, and thirty-five to the county. And that's a recurring every five years. So of the 9,690 concealed carries that we have in Pitt County, those will be cycled every five years, will be a renewal. So that will be a continuing, reoccurring revenue if people choose to renew their application. But I did want to interrate how many, again, how many concealed carries that we have in Pitt County. Some people are really amazed at how many people choose to carry their farm. As of yesterday, it was 9,690 people that carry concealed weapons in Pitt County. Our next, performance highlights. Just to run through several things, and I've got it where you can read it, so I won't spend a lot of time on it. We respond to over 30,649 calls for service. That was a 4% increase. We ensure our businesses, we do business checks during the year. We did over 22,000 last year. We reported on over 4,290 reports of criminal activity. That means where we actually had to do a report. Our crime rate overall, when you add all the numbers together, was over 23% from 2015. However, violent crimes have increased 1%, nonviolent crimes have increased 1%. Just to talk about our civil and some of our areas where we do papers and process in court. A nonviolent, we processed over 22,235 civil papers. If you look at that, that's approximately 1,800 papers a month these guys served. And just to recap real fast on civil processes, where you take master summons out, judgments, lawsuits, and so forth. Child support deputies assisted with DSS collections. They exceeded the goal of $14.4 million in child support payments. They served 935 commitment orders. We served over 3,800 child support show calls orders. Last year, we had five homicides in Pitt County. Three of those have been solved, cleared by arrest. We still have two that are outstanding that we're actively working continuously. We've got to realize, every morning we get up and you look at the news, what do you see? Shooting somewhere in the east. We see a drive-by shooting. We see somebody been shot in the leg. We see retaliations. We recently had a shooting that was involved in Kinston. But all that activity occurred in Pitt County, stemmed from an incident in Pitt County. We just recently had a gun shop in the east broken into, and there's still approximately 100 guns that have not been recovered. And we are fear, very fearful these guns are gonna end up somewhere in the east. We're working in partnership with other agencies to try to locate those guns. But that's what we got to be concerned about. We got to be concerned about our gang activity in Pitt County. We got to be concerned about, how do you get on top of it? How do you get ahead of it? And the minute I want to speak about a position that I'm asking for, but we've got to be concerned about where we going in this trend. You know, two years ago, it was completely different, but these gangs are real now. They are out here. They are a threat to the community. They are a threat to detention officers. They are a threat to law enforcement officers. And it's for real. And I'll talk about it a little bit more. In a minute. Excuse me. Community involvement. We basically did 25, we had 25 citizens complete our citizen academy. Additional 12 officers, 12 people completed our citizen academy too. We participate in community partnerships throughout the city of Greenville. We provided lunching and a dinner for our seniors. We teach DARE in all our county schools. And that is something that we struggle to do every year. We are one of the few agencies in the east that still teach DARE. Some people don't feel like it's a benefit. We do. We want to be able to introduce ourselves to our local kids, our community, into the schools. We build those relationships with, also, we teach them the importance of resisting drugs. We teach them about bullying. We teach them about gun safety. And as well, we try to give them some extra tools that when they get older in their toolbox, that they can realize sometimes the consequences of dealing with drugs. Participate in National Night Out. We had an event this year in Stokes and Fountain at the fire departments. We had over 300 citizens participating in that. We participate in our local parades, the local festivals, local events, participate in career fairs for Pitt County schools, Pitt Community College, as well as East Carolina. And we actually went to a job fair in Havelock this year with efforts to recruit some military. We have expanded our community watch program throughout our county. Every year, our goal is to continuously work forward in uniting our neighborhoods through community watch, organizing them so they can be prepared. Excuse me. And we always talk about our seniors. We love our seniors. We basically, this year, we have worked with them and taught them some programs. We called SOS, our senior program, seniors, our safety for our senior citizens. We teach them how to make their home safe. We teach them how to make it secure. We teach them for, to watch out for the phone solicitors that call. We call them con artists. They call every day, and they got something to say to you, and they got something to give to you. You won a prize. You'd be surprised at the seniors that respond to that. And phone calls I get every day, did I really win this? They want me to go get a green dot card and mail it. I say, no, ma'am, please don't do that. It's just a phone scam. And we've tried to research those things and arrest them, but the phone calls are spooked so much, they're out of country, you can't trace them. They really task our seniors with a lot of pressure. I actually went to one of them's house one day and answered the phone for over two hours of one of them calling every day, every day, every day. And about 10 of them would call time after time. And I was trying to convince her that it was a scam and not to give them your money. But moving on, we teach them about strangers when they come to your door, how to act to that, not invite people into your homes. And we always have a great passion for our seniors. We feel like a lot of times they're left behind, so we want to make sure they're taken care of. We speak here on this slide basically about our senior ball. Next one is scheduled for June 24, 2017. We already have 75 seniors registered for that, and we anticipate over 100. And this year, we started something new just before Christmas. We partnered with the Rockin' Horse Ranch. For those that don't know, Rockin' Horse Ranch is a therapeutic riding program for nonprofit organizations that provide assistance for our communities. It's a therapy to children, adults, and people with different physical disabilities. We actually went to two nursing homes this year, and I was kind of a little on the edge about that. But we carried them out there, and these ponies were trained, they were welcomed in by the management. And you see the faces on those people that were bound in a wheelchair and a bed, and you see a little pony come up and interact with them. It was quite fun. So it made it very enjoyable for us to do that. All right, this is what I want to talk to you about, the gang intelligence position. We've been talking about this for three years. Last year, we were fortunate enough to get two positions. We really see the importance of having two more, for them to be able to work and cover the shifts that we need them on. Our gang activity, it's always, like I said earlier, is continuing in Pitt County. These positions especially target for involving gang activities in our community. Like I said earlier, we see the activities on the news every day. I don't have to convince you of it. It's real. It's out there. And one thing that I wasn't able to prepare for in our planning was I realized that when we put them in jail, used to my problems would stop. It only take a dent out of it. It's right on going now. They're still interacting. They're communicating with the outside world. They're manipulating people's testimony when it goes to court. They're interacting. We have so many people in jail, and it's only so many ways we can keep separate. And we're finding that there, time we got a trial, for instance, we've got one coming up now, that eyewitnesses have completely changed their story because they've been threatened while they were in jail by the gang members. People on the outside have threatened their families if you come to court. So we've had to work double hard to keep this trial on track. So that's some of our concerns. And I'm also gonna ask in a minute about another position in jail that actually works neck to neck with this position. But we all know our gangs are real. We got a lot of guns on the street out there. These guys are carrying guns bigger than ours. We had a shooting in one of our clubs where over 100 rounds was fired, and luckily, nobody was shot. We had another shooting in a parking lot of the club, and where 30 rounds was fired. Couple people got shot, couple cars got shot up. But all of that stemmed from the shooting, and that all of that happened leading up to the shooting in Kinston where the guy was gunned down. It was an Aiden residence. And he pulled up beside him at a stoplight and gunned him down like 18 times. He was shot, his car. So to drive my point home, we've got to be aware of this. We've got to be concerned about it. And we've got to be on top of it. They work every day to outsmart me, and I have to work twice as hard to outsmart them. So if you really consider that, like I said, we've been asking for this for three years. We've got two positions. We greatly appreciate it. Two more would really tie this together where we can really work good. Those guys work really good with our detectives. They work really good with our jail. They've been tied up doing this gang intel, getting this case ready for trial. And it just really requires a lot of that time. Since I've been sheriff for the last seven years, I can speak that as far as additional people as patrol officers, not the two gang positions, but patrol officers, we really hadn't had any additional growth in our patrol division. Patrol division is the ones that work 24 hours a day. They're the first responders. They're the ones that answer calls for service. You know, we like to ask for more positions to help shorten up our, and improve our response time. We feel like we should be arriving on the scene faster than we are. We feel like we should be able to get there. Our county is divided up in sections to keep their deputy in that section and hopefully to be able to increase response time. But oftentimes, several sections are gone uncovered the way I designed them. Sometimes you have to have another person cover two sections, or a supervisor may have to cover a section in the south and then go back and cover a section in the north. And we're always tasked with mental commitments. So a lot of times, these officers have to pull out and be gone for six, seven, eight, 12 hours, sometimes on transports to Charlotte, where our part-timers are not available. So it falls back on the patrol if they have to pick up their responsibility. So, you know, that's an area I just want to bring to your attention. I know we're in tight times, but that is a concern. I would love to get to a point at the time that we could add at least one per shift to help fill that void and improve our performance. Our part-time employees, we greatly depend on those. Sorry. First, I missed the whole slide, excuse me. Okay, our part-time employees, we depend on them to work civil, our court, our transportation. Actually, I've had two this year that I put at the front desk. We were able to get, last year, get an electronic fingerprint machine, and they're fingerprinting them now when they come in. So when they come back for renewal, after we done it digitally, the state don't require us to fingerprint them anymore. So now they come in, that process is taken care of. It eliminates our citizens having to wait extremely long time to get fingerprints done. But our part-time employees, I have some that's helping me with policy now. I have some that helps with background investigations of new employees. So just to bring that to your attention, we do rely on that. And our part-time employees save the county approximately $265,000 alone in just benefits. We don't have to pay them their fringe benefits. I'm sorry. Okay, we'll talk about our vehicles is one of our top concerns. This year, we're requesting 92 replacement vehicles. I know that number's out, out there, and you're probably saying, wow. But every year, we've been asking for vehicles, and we haven't been able to meet those needs. And I understand why. I understand, you know, since 2010, we've been in a tight crunch, and we've been trying to really work to maintain them. But this year, it's just really come to our attention that, you know, we've exceeded our vehicle maintenance fund that we normally should be exceeding by probably $230,000 to $300,000 alone, just keeping those $500 cars running. And when I say that, we're literally putting motors in cars, we're putting transmissions in cars, we're putting rearing in cars, we're rebuilding the front end of a car. We have to have the vehicles. So I really feel like we're not being good stewards of our county money by doing that, but we have to have the vehicles. So I've talked with the manager, and he expressed some of the same concerns I do about the assets that we're spending in that. So the replacement vehicles he have here on, before you, the fleet has 45 vehicles that are driven daily. When I say that with 24 hours, guys on, guys are off. So with over 150,000 miles on them. We have 21 of those that have 175,000 miles. Our part-time employees, ones I was speaking about earlier, that take our mental trips and stuff, for some reason or another, we having to go to Charlotte a whole lot now. We go four to five times a week. And then we got to turn around and go back and pick the consumer back up. So we have to really put a lot of unnecessary miles on cars. Let me say required miles on cars, but a lot of these transport guys are driving. I hear them check out of the county, they got over 170, 75,000 miles going to Charlotte. Luckily, they've been able to survive and maintain those vehicles. Our fear is always being, breaking down on the road and incurring that cost of having to get a tracker to pick them up, pay somebody to go get them, rent them a room or something overnight until they can get back home. So this is a concern we have, our vehicles. We just, we really need to look at that. And I know we've asked for a lot, and my next slide is gonna talk about, the manager had asked me to be prepared to be able to speak about maybe our history of how we purchased the vehicles in the last year. And I went back as far as 2012. The county purchased 12 vehicles. Two of them were out of sheriff's budget and 10 out of federal in state seizure money. In 2013, the slide before you, you have, I'm sorry, 2013, we purchased 24. 17 out of county, seven out of sheriff's forfeiture monies. In 2014, 15, seven out of the county fund and nine out of the sheriff's budget. I think that's the year we had the excess money, and with the year the gas dropped, and we had the extra money in vehicle allowance. So the manager agreed that we could take that money and purchase those extra cars out of the money, out of the leftover money. 15 and 16, we purchased eight, six of sheriff's budget, and two out of federal seizure money. That was some undercover cars I bought for narcotics officers. This year, 16, 17, we got 10. And they haven't even got on the roads yet. So generally, what we try to do, we didn't have the luxury of doing it this year. We couldn't order the cars until late October, November, and the cars are just coming in. In the past, we've always been so desperate. As soon as y'all give us the green light to order them, we're able to order. And a lot of times, I can buy cars that have been already delivered, meet the specs that we have, and generally, we can not have to incur next year's costs. And usually, we save $1,000 a car. And I had them cars on the road in 30, 40 days. So just to add to, we take those, the cars that we ordered, that we needed so bad last year, we just now get them. So I've had to keep those cars running technically another year. So it's, even costs is even more. So I think it's to the point now, we have to look at what the operation cost is and what you're able to do. One way to other, we got to pay. I just hate to keep paying money on cars that, when we carry them to sale, we don't get the $500 for them. But that's where we at. And I know you're gonna have some questions on those. Okay, real quickly, I have for you our sheriff's office revenues. You can take a look at those. Detention center population. We're running to our detention center now. I'm doing both at the same time. Average population this year is actually, we've seen a decrease. We're at 442 is where our average population is now. Last year, this time, I remind you, we were busting 500 wide open. But it's actually, several things have contributed to be able to get our population down. And we all know that E Block hasn't opened yet, and we're fine. We just remind you of that. This is the position I was speaking about a while ago, and I probably should have put that slide with that one. But we asked for, we call it a gang, detention center position request. It's an intelligent surveillance officer. You know, we have a lot of requests from attorneys. We have a lot of requests from the federal marshals for video footage of our jail, as well as other intel that we are able to gather in the jail. I don't really want to let the cat out of the bag, but we have a lot of communications that we can monitor in our jail, our video visitation, as well as all monitored with no expectation of privacy. So we were able to gain a lot of information. And this is where I really want this gang officer, this position here, to work with the gang officers and providing them with information. We provide information to the Greenville Police Department, the SBI, the Howard Patrol, any agencies are just flooded with information that we were able to give them. But to get that information requires somebody sitting down and listening to hours and hours and hours and hours of tapes. But we're able to gain a lot of intelligence. I just feel like if we could get a handle on that and gather the intel that is to gather from the jail, it would be worth its weight in gold. And like I said earlier, you know, just cause they in jail, this activity don't stop. We have discovered so much information in the last year, and we found out that we had a situation that ended up discharging five officers because what we were able to gather, they were conducting themselves in a fashion that wasn't acceptable. So, and these guys are sitting in jail all day long and trying to figure out who the weak link is, who they can talk to, who they can get to do a favor, who can bring this to them, who can make this phone call. And that's what we're doing with all day long. And it's a nightmare. I'm telling you, it is a problem that I would never have predicted two years ago. But these, these gang members are really, really causing us a lot of concern. And I am very proud that we've got a handle on it today. But it's a 24-hour day job. And our vehicles at detention center, we've been behind on our vans. We do have a van coming this year, and like I said, it ain't even gotten serviced yet. We still trying to get that ready. It's here, but it ain't got all the equipment put on it yet. But we're concerned about doing our transportation of our federal inmates. We have to go a long ways and pick them up, and they expect us to be able to do that. And we expect us to be able to perform, transport their prisons back and forth safely. And you see a list there of the mileage. I won't go through each one of those. Our next slide basically has our jail revenues on it. I'll give you a minute to review those. One thing we're very proud of, you know, last year, we chose to lower our federal inmates to 35, because at that time, we didn't even feel like we were gonna be able to keep that because our population was so high. But we've been able to, Major Phillips has been communicating with me about our population. I said, well, let's fill those beds with feds. Let's get them in there, and let's take advantage of while we're down. Go, I have that luxury next year. But it's worked out really good for us. We feel like we're gonna exceed that projected revenue by over $400,000. And I'm proud to say our relationship And I'm proud to say our relationship with the feds is good. They love our facility, they love our medical, they love our transportation, they love our intelligence in our jail. But it's really, I feel like we're very comfortable with what we do and what they expect us to do for them. And now we just wind it up with some of my concerns that I have. We all know we've been speaking about the agent fleet. How do we get caught up? The manager has proposed a couple of ideas to me and to y'all about what we can do to get caught up. And I think we've done pretty good to get through since 2010. But we've got to figure out what to do and we got to provide safety to these vehicles. And everything that we were asking for is, you know, is going straight to patrol, is going to the frontline responders. It's not going to the people sitting behind the desk. It'll be to the first responders and the people that need these vehicles the most. Again, gang impacts in Pitt County, how we deal with that. Our involuntary commitment is continuously increasing. Always got to combat our drug problem. You know, we all hear about prescription medicine, we hear about heroin. I was talking to a person, they made a rest of, for lack of better words, a crackhead. And then he basically said, man, I can't even get crack no more. It's heroin, heroin, heroin. I've had to switch over to heroin. The heroin is really so bad, dealers don't even want to sell the crack anymore. They're selling the heroin, it's so bad. And we all know that it's heroin out there now that's very dangerous and the amounts, the doses of it is very dangerous. They're warning us, if you even touch it, you can go into an overdose. So we won't allow our guys in the lab to test it without a second person standing there in Norcan, standing right beside them in case they need it. That's how serious it is. And you know, we all hear every day of people that, you know somebody that's overdosed, you know? I know three in the last month that I know, you know their families. And they called me crying about it, you know? It's sad. We got a serious problem now. Our school violence, we work really hard to keep our violence down in the school. We have SROs assigned to certain schools and it works really good. We have crime stoppers in the school. They participate a lot in that. We get a lot of tips from our crime stoppers. And we just got a few pictures of some of our community events there we do. You can look at those in your spare time. And I'd like to say thank you for what you have done for us last year. We appreciate the increase in helping our employees, the county employees throughout with their increases last year and what you're trying to do this year. We appreciate that too. And this time, I'll take any questions you got.
Thank you, Sheriff, for that fine presentation. And certainly, I want to thank you for keeping the citizens of Pitt County safe, especially your work with the senior citizens. I've gotten so many calls in reference to that, that the senior citizens are well, have been well taken care of.
Thank you.
So we appreciate you doing that. One of the concerns I have about your gangs, how many, are there different, you say your gangs are beginning to be more prevalent in this area? Are there different types of gangs now that...
They break off new branches every day. They got one called nine-five G Shine. And I said, Lord, the only thing we had to deal with bootlegs when we were coming along. But they've come up with so many different names now. Yeah, and we had Blood, the Crips, I can't name them all. There's so many of them out there now. They'll branch off and now they got a group out of Virginia, they're, they call it by somebody's name and that's their generation of who they are, who they're in charge. And what's so scary about our gangs is the recruitment and what they have to do to, to gain rank or respect or whatever term they use. Like the guy that got shot, you know, he had to take somewhere around eighteen bullets in his car because the guy got eighteen stitches or something like that. It's just crazy. And that's their retaliation. And these young guys, they've got guns. We do search warrants weekly on guns, guns, guns. And it's hard to keep up. If we don't stay ahead of this, then this is going to be a war, really, what's going to be. And we don't like police officers, I'm telling you. They, you know, we have to completely suit up when we go out.
Mr. Chairman, before we go on, I may be the only one. Did we skip the sheriff's office revenues page?
You did.
I don't have a number on our page, but it speaks to the sheriff's office revenues.
I think he said we could look at that later.
Oh, okay, I was, I was wondering if I just missed something. Okay, that's fine. No, we have it, yes, but we didn't reference it.
I was going to let you look at it. I didn't want to take your time of going all the way through it, but I'll take any questions you have from that.
Any other questions or concerns? Mr. Garrett.
Speaking of gangs, how many people, how many gang members do we have in Pitt County, approximately?
I have no way of estimating.
Would it be a thousand or 10,000 or...
I wouldn't say it's a thousand. I really don't know. Hundreds, I'll say that.
Hundreds, okay.
Because we're learning as we go who they are and they get arrested. And a lot of things through our intelligence, I was speaking briefly about a while ago. We learn a lot, who they're connecting with, who's their bank, who they're making phone calls to. We learn, we learn a lot and we learn a lot.
The other thing, you know, in Scott's recommended budget, he has the thirty new vehicles.
Yes, sir.
How do you feel about that?
I feel like it's something that's much needed. It's going to help us get through next year where we're not spending excess amounts of money on repairing old vehicles. I think it'll pay for itself, really. I think that money that we're going to save, we'll be able to put these officers in a new car with a warranty on it, with a hundred thousand mile warranty. It's going to cover those repairs for the next four years.
And the thing that I really liked about that was, well, number one, you would be getting thirty new cars. And based upon your charts here, I understand you need those. And then the second thing that I really liked about it was that we are saying that the reduction in the maintenance costs will pay for that. And to me, you know, if that's a fact, to me, that's a no-brainer. And I was wondering if there are other departments that could work that same situation. And if there were, then we need to be getting more cars. If we can pay for new cars with reduced maintenance dollars, that's surely the right thing to do.
Well, it used to be a time that vehicles were replaced, even by the Howard Patrol, between eighty and ninety thousand miles. Now, they've moved theirs up to a hundred now. But it used to be a time, we replaced our vehicles by 120,000 miles. You were able to sell the vehicle for five or six thousand dollars and put that money towards a replacement. If somebody could do a study and show, and we did it years ago, from what it costs to keep that car running from 120,000 miles to 200,000 miles, you know, it would probably blow our minds of what we're spending in repairs. You know, if we could get back to a replacement type vehicle one day, I'm sure it'd be years down the road. But I think it would save the county money if we could look at replacing the car before we have to tow it, literally tow it to the auto auction. You know, we taking tires off of them, we taking trunk lids off them. We have cars, we leave there for nothing but parts. And I think what spoiled us was when we had the Crown vehicles, those vehicles would run 200,000 miles. You know, I could pass them down to a transport officer and get another fifty, sixty thousand miles out of them at 150. But the chargers just ain't seem to be lasting that long. At 120,000 miles, the motors are blowing up in them, the camshafts are locking up in them. So we'll, I tasked a guy to study that and see if there's a maintenance that we can do at 80,000 to keep that from happening. We need to get back to, if we're going to keep our vehicles, they need to last 160 to 180,000 miles. They're just not doing it.
Scott, these thirty vehicles, that's all for this next budget cycle? That one, you would be buying those vehicles next year, right?
That's correct. And also, actually, along with the normal vehicle process, you'll probably get nine or 10 vehicles on top of that.
Okay, good.
Approximately forty.
Normal vehicle.
Yes, right, good.
One thing I would like to tell you, Mr. Garrett, too, is that we joined with the North Carolina Sheriff's Association a couple of years ago. We actually have two people that are on their board. They started a procurement program. And we actually are finding that we are buying our vehicles through them. And they just sent out an update last week of other things we can buy. But we can buy our vehicles through them. We're saving about $500 a car from them versus the state contract. So we're actually saving money there. And we're also speaking about, you know, every year, there's going to be a price increase of a car. So if we can get the green light now, I can order cars July first and have them here at seventeen prices, 2017 prices, versus if they have them left over. And generally, they got twenty or thirty sitting around somewhere and they're begging somebody to take them. The price is really not negotiable, but I can take advantage of the instant delivery of that. And you know, they also start a program now, we can buy tires. They sent out an email the other day, their procurement of heavy equipment that the county can, anybody can buy. Anybody that's local government can take, participate in that. That's the way they do to fund the association as well. They model behind what Florida does. They do their whole state down there. We can buy bulldozers, tractors, whatever through their program. And we find that sometimes they're cheaper. I think the landfill bought a couple of vehicles from them as well and say, one of them was a couple thousand dollars.
Good, thank you.
So we always sharpen our pencil. We don't just go out and buy the first thing we can find.
Commissioner Owens.
Sheriff, thank you for your presentation and it's concise and to the point. Referencing the request for positions, gang, two gang intelligence deputies. Do you have any gang intelligence deputies at this time?
Yes, sir.
How many do you have?
Y'all gave me two last year.
Wait, did we add that two last year?
Yes, sir.
What is the manager, what do you understand his budget recommending for you on this particular item for this year?
One.
So you'll be getting two, I mean, one of the two?
Yes, sir.
All right. Are you telling me that to bring this one deputy in, it's going to take 108,000 dollars to do that?
I think that was figured in with the, the most expensive part, when we generally figured is the cars, the equipment, the radios. The radios are 5,000 a piece, I think, with the benefits. I don't have to figure in front of me, it's around 60 or 70, but you figure 30,000 on top of that for a car. If we can get the positions, we'll struggle through. If I can just get the series.
That's why I wanted you to explain to me.
Yes, sir.
So that car that would go with that deputy that he's aligning for you, I'm not talking to you yet.
Okay.
That car, is it within the thirty that you expect to get?
Well, it could be, yes, sir.
But you have the thought to designate where that goes.
I would have to make it work, yes, sir.
So just as a general rule, then you're saying, one deputy for intelligence is going to cost you about 108,000 dollars?
If I was to suit them up, uniforms, radios of 5,000 a piece, he has a handheld car radio.
Now, let's go over to the next page.
Yes, sir.
Request position, four deputies position.
Yes, sir.
One per patrol shift. See, that's what I meant about you explaining it simply to me. I understand what you're talking about there. But on that one, four, that cost is 103,842 dollars per deputy. Now, what does that 103, now, get back first though, how many did the manager allow you on that request, Sheriff?
Zero.
Sir?
None.
All right. Now, what does that 103 per deputy entail? Is that another car or is that...
Basically, when we, when we were asked to do a position, we were asked to figure where that position's going to start. And then a vehicle, uniforms, ammo, training, that's, that's, the first figure is probably the worst-case scenario. But if we're given the positions at salary and benefits, we can make it, we'll figure out some way to make it work. So that figures are high, yes, sir.
Where I'm getting to, I, as a commissioner, think that I need to go back to the manager and Dwayne, who wanted to interrupt me a while ago, but let them show us, I think you need these people. But I don't want an inflated figure when I go to argue with them.
Yes, sir.
And that's my point. And they understand where I'm coming from too.
But I can give you, I can go back and prepare you a figure of entry level with benefits and that type stuff. And then we can do it if we have to equip them.
I need something other than a blank figure in order to advocate my argument to fulfill your request, is what I'm saying. Excuse me, Dwayne, I wasn't trying to be smart. What did you want to say?
It's already been addressed. Yes, sir, it's been, it's already been addressed. It came up.
Scott. Can I add a comment, though? If you are inclined to grant him additional positions, if you would please allot him a vehicle, a new vehicle to go with it? Because if he, if he takes these thirty vehicles and then allows these to the new positions, we really aren't helping the situation. You've still got the old cars on the road. We've cut the maintenance budget to maintain them. So he really needs the position plus the new vehicle as an expansion to the budget. Otherwise, we're just treading water even, almost starting to go under on the vehicles.
So you're saying as manager, then if you couldn't get the vehicle, you wouldn't recommend positions? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Mr. ...
Commissioner Ward.
Following up with that, the two deputies, one of them, the gang deputies, one of them you were considering at the jail to be kind of your surveillance type person to go over. And I understand that certainly makes a lot of sense. But it seems like to me, when you're figuring the expense of the over 100,000 per one, that if that's going to be their primary, that might be reduced, that might be an opportunity.
That would actually come out of detention budget. And that would be very near, maybe advanced detention office or something like that, that position.
And that would be about...
So you're talking about salary and benefits.
About how much?
About 64,000.
Okay, and that would make a difference, I think, when you come back.
I don't have to furnish them with a car.
Right, when you come back to talk to us about...
Possibly a civilian, more likely to be a civilian.
About those two positions that Commissioner Owens was talking about.
I wish I'd have said a while ago was, right now, that job is being sold by everybody. And we're finding our captains are spending 10 hours out of eight-hour day listing the tapes and getting stuff to the courthouse and getting to the DA's office and then they got to go to court and testify.
Well, I understand the importance of it. And that was what my point was, that if the price would come down from the over 100,000, that would make a big difference, I think. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Webb, then Commissioner Owens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sheriff, I looked through it and I don't see any frills, really. I see a lot of necessities. And maybe I'm biased because I work so closely with your crowd. But I just want to give a compliment to your jail staff. I spend a lot of time in there, luckily voluntarily. But it's a very professional jail. I feel safer in there than I do in any state or federal prison that I visit to do my job. And talking about the gangs, Mr. Garrett, I'll tell you, we don't just have to worry about the gang members here. They come from all over the region to here because it's the largest area, most opportunity for them to continue their enterprise. As a matter of fact, the last two that I've arrested in my position have been from another county. But when we do that, they don't go back to their county. They stay here and we pay for them. The, you know, as you know, I think the manager pointed out yesterday that all the, all of the requests have been needed and valid and that we're running into a revenue issue. And what I would ask is if we have to generate those revenues, that you help us, help the community understand that, you know, it may cost an extra dollar a month, but at the same time, that dollar a month gets you an extra deputy per shift and gets these gang intelligence officers that are very needed. And like I say, even though I feel safe, as safe as one can feel when they're in a jail, and they run, but they do need that monitoring because there's so much, there's not enough space to keep everyone absolutely separate. That needs to be separate. And then when you factor in the PREA law and the requirements for that, it's, I don't believe the major has enough rooms unless you were just going to put everyone in a single tiny room by themselves where they had to stand up all day. There'd be no way to fit everybody. And so the challenges there are advanced math for sure. And so I appreciate the work that they do and that you folks are doing, especially with the gang stuff, because that is, for lack of a better term, out of hand. And it's not for lack of trying to get it under control. There's a lot more factors in gangs than law enforcement. It's a lot of socioeconomic issues. But that's all I'd ask, is if we have to generate the revenue, that you, in any department head, help us, let the public understand that that money is not going as the federal, state government would use it to build a bridge somewhere because someone had a congressional district with some power, that it actually goes to a direct service that they receive for their safety and their well-being in the county. Because it's looking like that's becoming more and more, as the numbers shake out, more and more of what's going to need to probably happen in the near future.
Well, you know, I've been working with you guys for seven years now. And I see every year how concerned y'all are about no tax increase. But we all know we've kicked that can down the road a long time. And things cost more, you know? Our expectancy has gone up tremendously, what they expect from all departments in the county. You know, and I think y'all have done a good job of managing it, but it comes time, you know, we have, y'all have to make tough decisions.
And the other option is too, if you could, if you have some sway with the state to get them to free up that three to 10 million dollars of unfunded mandates that they send down to us, we'd have plenty of money to fund everything you ask for and then some.
I'll take a trip to Raleigh today for you.
Thank you, thank you. Well, we'll cover the gas for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Owens.
I'm glad Beth or Glenn, one mentioned this, about this surveillance officer.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, you implied to us that time and labor and so forth is involved in that to follow up on requests made by other people. You referenced attorneys or district attorney, whoever. to follow up on requests made by other people, and you referenced attorneys or district attorney, whoever. Do you have some source of charging a user fee for providing this information?
I don't think the law allows us to.
Sir?
I don't think the law allows us to. Only thing we can do, and Janice can probably tell you, is public record. And somewhere in my revenues, I, I show like public requests, and it's like a couple of thousand dollars a year, and like literally it's nothing. We charge like twenty-five cent a page, that's all we can charge, for a copy of a, a Cremona history driver's record. And it's basically, we're tasked to do that.
If, if, you, you're probably right, and I don't know the law on that, but I'd like for the county attorney to verify that. If there was some concept that you could get that, it would be good on that.
I don't know if the county could do an ordinance on that. It's really tasked to us, I feel like, you know, we.
That's here and there, but that's my point. My next thing I wanted to reference and commend you and your staff on, you talked about the number of prisoners you'd had for the last four hundred and some?
Yes, sir.
Foresight, business judgment is an issue in any position. I think your foresight, when you came in, if I recall correctly, at the last budget, you didn't recommend opening that other sale because of the lack of necessity needed. You did recommend reducing the number of federal prisoners, which you indicate today was the proper thing to do. And I want to commend you for both of those attributes.
And I've given the manager my word, as long as we got the beds there, we will try to seek out to fill them with federal beds when possible.
Thank you.
Sheriff, just a few questions on the maintenance of the vehicles. Uh, what garage does these, the maintenance?
Several garages. We offer out to, to different garages, and we get them to forecast what they're gonna charge us for different things. But we don't patronize one garage. I try to distribute it out through the county, and just to be fair with all of the businesses in Greenbough.
Okay, and do you break out what is truly preventive maintenance and what is hard repairs? Cause you could say oil changes, air filters, fan belts, even brake pads is preventative.
Yes, sir.
But a, a valve job, that's a, that's a repair.
I'm glad you, you brought that up, and, and the manager was able, allowed me about two years ago to take a position and make it a fleet manager position. His job is to manage all the hundred and, I think, sixty cars that we have, and I got a sheet right over here I can give you with every miles as of last week. His job is to make sure that the oils are changed in them. We have GPSs on our cars, so he gets an indicator if, if there's a warning coming across his computer that, uh, maybe number six cylinder ain't firing, or it's over his mileage on his thing. So he makes contact. I give him authority. You send that deputy email, and he replies to you, and you CC it to his lieutenant. So, you know, you do have the authority to, to, um, and he does surprise inspections. He calls the guys out to the garage, puts them on a lift and does that, but he's been in place for about a year and a half now, but he's got a lot of work to do. Uh, he inherited a mess out there. We had to dispose of a bunch of property that had been sitting around, everybody tending to it. So we've had to clean up, dispose of old cars, old surplus equipment, military surplus equipment. And he does the price comparison and reports back to me, uh, what they're charging. Um, and to be honest with you, neck to neck. The biggest thing is who does the best service, who's gonna get it done the quickest, and who fixes it right the first time.
Exactly.
And we actually test a couple of them, put marks on oil filters and make sure they, one of them didn't get changed, so we don't patronize them no more.
Question for the county manager, do we have a county garage somewhere, a physical garage with a lift?
At the Solid Waste and Recycling, we, we do some minor work out there, but we don't do major, major work, cause I understand it.
No, we don't do.
Do we routinely do oil changes?
Yes, we've got a, John Demery does have a person over there that does, like I say, the, the minor work, but not anything major.
Yeah, cause oil changes and filters is the one thing that prolongs the life of the cars. I, I did enjoy what you said about the Crown Vix, the Fords lasting longer, and I myself have a two thousand and eight Charger. And, uh, that's a cause for concern if they've got to end at a hundred and twenty thousand miles.
How hard you're running. Yeah, a lot of people buying these cars at state surplus, and thinking they're getting a good deal, and then you see them in the yard with no tags on them.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner, Rick Williams?
Um, thank you so much for the report and all the service you and your staff give to us as citizens. And I like the fact that they are very visible in the community, because in the rural area, there are a lot of places to hide when you want to do, uh, non-criminal things, I mean criminal things. So, uh, I, I appreciate that. But what I wanted, my point was on your intel and your, your software, because I find that in a service like yours, uh, when people can communicate all over the world, you should be able to, in a flick of the mouse, be able to pull up and get what you need. How is your software serving you? And, um, this past year, I was pleased that your staff assisted me with the problem that I had along with the county manager. Seniors are victims to, to sense, and it does cost us. And, uh, what Deputy German does, I was at a crime and community watch last night in Belvoir, and when the highway patrol appeared, so I have a good understanding today of some of the things that you faced from a last night session. Uh, but I'm concerned about your software. Do how, do you keep it update? Do you change it over? And does it function with a quick flick?
Yes, ma'am. And we're supported by the county MIS. Mr. Mike Taylor works with us, he oversees, um, our software that we have. I have a full-time person that works for me that manages our software. Um, believe me, what they charge us a year is, is top-notch. We have to pay annual licensing fees every year. Um, so, yes, ma'am, it's up to date.
Yeah, I know license fees goes up.
County has a very good system when it comes to, um, computer network and software.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I wanna commend you, uh, on your program with the seniors. Uh, I'm president of a, a Southside Senior Group here, uh, in Greenbough, and, uh, we really, uh, appreciate the service. Uh, also, uh, the, especially the Christmas shopping. One of, one of my church members, uh, she was on tech, on television, Mildred Williams, so, uh, we really appreciate that program. Uh, I have a very simple, uh, question. Everybody else may know, know the answer to this, but, um, how many vans, uh, do you have at the detention center? And, and are those vans used just to transport federal prisoners?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, what's that total number, Jim? Five?
Five.
We have five at detention center, and they, they transport federal inmates as well as state and local inmates. Uh, there, one van's back and forth every day from the courthouse to the jail, back and forth several times a day. Um, and then we have them to constantly go and, we, what we do is, one thing we do to keep our jail population down, when they sentence them, we can wait for the state to come pick them up. It's allowed to be seven days, it might be five days. So when we get that order from the judge, we immediately put them in the van, along with others, and send them to Raleigh. So we've chopped our population down. You say, wow, you're making a trip to Raleigh, but it costs me a hundred dollars a day to keep them. So I'm getting, getting them back in the state custody when they need to be. So that's one thing we, they work really hard on, is keeping that population down. They, they watch it every day. I can call them any day, and they can tell me exactly what I got every aisle, how many people we got in our jail. And that's what they do. You know, they, they work on keeping our population down, which saves us money at the end.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you.
I hear none. Thank you, Sheriff, for your fine presentation.
Thank you very much. Thank y'all, and y'all have a great day.
Thank you. At this time, it's called for about a ten minutes break.
Welcome back, uh, and thank you for joining us again. We are now, uh, ready for the emergency management. Ellen Everett will come and address the board. Thank you, Ellen Everett. Thank you for what you do.
Chairman, good morning, commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning to, uh, to give you an overview of our department and to talk a little bit about our budget. Uh, so, really, at this point, we'll just go ahead and just sort of dive into things. Of course, we are talking about Pitt County Emergency Management, and this is, um, our, our budget presentation. So, start with really, who is Pitt County Emergency Management? Well, we like to think that Pitt County Emergency Management is a great group of professionals that work to address the emergency-related needs of the community through partnerships of preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation. It's everyone working together, it's a team. Whatever the issue is at hand, we work together collectively with our partners throughout the county to meet the needs of the citizenry. So that's who we are, is Pitt County Emergency Management. Pitt County Emergency Management is made up of four divisions. Those four divisions consist of fire, EMS, nine-one-one, and emergency planning. When we go through and we talk about each of these divisions, we'll start with, uh, with our fire division, and we'll start with our fire staffing. Currently today, we have, um, one county employee that serves as our full-time deputy fire marshal. We have two county employees that serve as part-time deputy fire marshals. So these individuals really are responsible for doing the, uh, the day-to-day fire code inspections, reviewing construction plans for compliance, as well as investigating fires to determine cause and origin, where the fires started, how they started, and so forth. And also to respond to various types of emergencies, whether that be some type of a fire that the, that the local fire department may need assistance on, whether that's some type of overturned tanker that may be involving some type of hazardous material, or some type of a disaster like severe weather event. So, so these individuals are working really in that all-hazards approach, um, to help whatever the need may be, uh, in our community. And of course, uh, they work very closely with our county, um, volunteer fire departments. Speaking of volunteer fire departments, as you know, we, uh, contract with twenty different county volunteer fire departments. These twenty departments that you have a contract with are made up of about seven hundred and fifteen volunteer firefighters. These individuals that give of their time, give of their efforts, their monies, to help their community. So, so we're very appreciative of that. They do an awesome job in helping to protect our community twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. Their main, um, source of funding, as you know, comes from the fire tax that's assessed on properties, uh, in the individual districts. So when we talk about budgets and we talk about the, these fire departments, um, we have one department this year that's asking for a slight, uh, tax increase, and that is the Aiden Fire Department. So, um, out of our departments, uh, there's one department that's asking for roughly a one point two-five percent, um, a tax increase, and that being the Aiden Fire Department to help them with some operational needs that they have in the community. The other departments are, are asking for their, their tax rates to remain as they were in the previous year. The other thing that I wanna mention to you, as we're talking about fire departments and their financials, uh, if you recall, last year, this board, um, partnered with the County Fire Association to provide additional funding for the purchase of fire trucks, for the purchase of fire apparatus. So, with that, um, the board agreed to, um, budget five departments or, or five trucks per year, uh, at a rate of twenty-five thousand dollars per truck. So, with that, um, we have six departments this year that's asking to participate in that program. So, through our partnership with the, uh, with the Fire Association, we will work with those individuals to determine which department would not be eligible this year. So, again, in times past, it's been a situation of where the board would, uh, would provide ten thousand dollar supplemental funding to help a fire department. But by your actions last year, taking that ten thousand, elevating it to twenty-five thousand, and elevating the number of potential trucks to be increased to five. So, so there's a slight increase there, but again, uh, in terms of vehicle purchases, we will actually work with the Fire Association to identify which five departments would be eligible for that funding this year. Some of our fire department highlights, we're very proud of the job that our fire departments do. Uh, we had three departments this year, this past year, that were notified by the State Fire Marshal's Office that it was time for their, um, departments to be rated for their ability to provide service to the community, which has a direct impact on the insurance ratings of the homeowners of that community. Those three departments that were inspected last year, um, by the, um, State Fire Marshal's Office, we're proud to report all lowered their insurance grade. Um, ironically, all three departments had a, a grade of seven, and those grades were lowered to a five. So two whole percentage points, so to speak, were lowered, so that's a direct reflection on the homeowners and a savings to the homeowner. So, again, we're very proud of that, and we hope that trend will continue as the State Fire Marshal's Office, uh, will actually inspect additional fire departments in the future. With that, we also, um, multiple fire departments this past year have been awarded various grants. I'm proud to say that just yesterday, we were notified that eleven of our departments, uh, received roughly two hundred and seven thousand dollars worth of matching grants from the State Fire Marshal's Office. So they're really good sources of the taxpayer's dollars, so we're, again, we're very proud of, of what they're doing, not only in their response to the community, but also their financial obligation to the community as well. And, uh, we can't say enough good things about the fire service in, in terms of their response to Hurricane Matthew, and also to the, uh, western wildfires that occurred in western North Carolina, um, earlier in the year. So, that's just a quick synopsis of where we are, um, on the fire side of, of the house in terms of the, uh, fire division. The next division we'll talk about for just a moment, um, within our department, is EMS. Uh, we'll start with, uh, EMS staffing. Um, when we look at our staffing, we have one, uh, position, that's the EMS coordinator. This individual also serves as our deputy, uh, emergency management director. That's Jim MacArthur, who's in the audience with us, uh, this morning. We also have four EMS supervisors now. With that, um, those four supervisors are not on duty at the same time, basically one per day. So in a sense, think of our operation as a, as a four-day shift, so to speak. So each day, there's a different supervisor that is on duty. This particular supervisor that's on duty that particular day is not sitting behind a desk on administrative work. This is a person that's actually out in the field in a response vehicle. So this person is out in the community, helping those in need, uh, and supporting the responding EMS units to whatever the location may be. So, uh, we have those four supervisors. We also are proud of this next position, and that is the position of a EMS community paramedic. As you recall, uh, this board granted us permission to enter into a grant partnership with Vicent, uh, to fund a position, a hundred thousand dollar position for one year, to really go out north of the river to help, um, work with individuals who were, um, frequently visiting the hospital for whatever reason. And so this is in an effort to try and keep individuals out of the emergency room and out of the hospital by having this individual check on them and work with them in terms of certain medical needs. So we're very proud of that position and, uh, really appreciate the partnership that you all allowed us to enter into with, uh, with Vicent. Now, we have a twelve full-time EMS paramedics. These paramedics will either work a twelve-hour shift or a twenty-four-hour shift, um, you know, depending upon scheduling. And we also have a pool of part-time staff that, that we, um, pull from in order to make sure that we have adequate staffing, uh, throughout the day and throughout the night. And of course, as we're talking about staffing, it's important to know that these positions here are, are our responsibility for what we term as the Bethel and Pac-Tolus EMS districts. As you know, those are the two areas of the county that we, Pitt County, have direct control and oversight of, that we manage, uh, those two stations directly. So, uh, this information really pertains to those two, um, stations, if you will. Now, continuing on with our EMS services, as you know, just like with the fire service, we contract, we also contract with EMS agencies. Uh, we contract with, um, eight, uh, nonprofit EMS squads through contracts that you all sign with, uh, with these individual, um, boards of directors. We operate two squads, so we have a total of ten EMS squads operating in Pitt County. Eight through a contract of nonprofit status, and two that are directly managed by Pitt County, that being Pac-Tolus and Bethel. Um, all ten departments provide paramedic-level care. They do a great job, folks, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, providing paramedic-level service. Rain, sleet, snow, whatever the case may be, they're there, they're doing their job, and we are really proud of the service that they provide. Just like we have a fire tax to help fund our volunteer fire departments, we also have a funding stream that helps us with the funding of our county EMS service. And that, uh, that funding is through a county-wide EMS tax as well as transportation fees. The tax rate that, um, that is assessed to the citizens is four point six. We're not asking for that to change this year, we're asking for that to remain, um, the same. So therefore, there will be no recommendation of a tax increase, um, in terms of helping to fund our EMS service. Now, we do have a couple of changes on the EMS side, um, in this particular budget, and we're very proud of this through a partnership of, of, of being creative and, and able to get certain things, uh, done. Those changes really consist of those four EMS supervisors that we spoke of a moment ago. We're gonna actually be able to change their, their work schedule from a twelve-hour supervisory status to a twenty-four-hour supervisory status. So, as we stand today, that person that, uh, one of those four individuals that says supervisor, is gonna work twelve hours on a quick-response vehicle. Then we park that vehicle, we put that person on an ambulance, and they ride on an ambulance the rest of the night. So, by being creative, we're able to take these four positions and move them from really twelve hours on duty, uh, in that supervisor role on that quick-response vehicle, and then placing them on an ambulance to work the remaining, uh, twelve hours of their shift. We're now able to take that, uh, quick-response vehicle and keep this person on that vehicle for twenty-four hours. So we'll have constant twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five service of a quick-response vehicle responding. So that's something we're very proud of. So as a result of that, um, person of those four positions going to a twenty-four-hour status, we need to backfill those positions, and that's where we are asking for the creation of the four new, um, full-time position, paramedic positions that the, that the county manager has recommended in his budget, uh, for consideration of, of approval. Now, it's important to note that we're doing this creative scheduling, um, without, uh, any type of funding increase. We're able to do it with the dollars that we have that we're asking for. Uh, this is something that our EMS oversight, the committee that you all put in place some years ago that we work with in terms of EMS, this was actually something that they recommended, uh, they wanted us to pursue, we agreed, and, um, so we presented. recommended, they wanted us to pursue, we agreed, and so we presented it to the oversight committee, they approved it. So we're here this morning, really excited to say, hey, we can continue to provide additional service, continuation of service, and it's not to really have an impact financially on our budget. So we're proud of that. So that's the second division of our emergency management department. The third division really is that of our 911 communication center. And I wanted to stop here for just a moment and really say thank you for what you've done as a board, in terms of helping us with our 911 center. The county manager, the finance director, they've been great in working with us through the permissions that you all have granted in terms of funding to help us enhance communication. So we, as a department, we want to say thank you for what you've done in terms of supporting us, because when we talk about the highlights of our communication center, we just recently implemented our new CAD system, our new software for dispatching. So that's new technology that we have, that we're very appreciative to have. Also, as you know, we've been ongoing for a while, the implementation of the fire EMS radio and paging enhancement project. That's something that's been in the works now for a while. We're hoping to have that project finished out the third quarter of this year, and obviously that comes with the price, and we, again, we're really appreciative of what you all have done to help us fund that. Also, the implementation of our backup 911 center, we're hoping that that's going to be completed third quarter of this year as well. Again, those dollars that you appropriated for that last year, we really appreciate that. So it's truly a partnership, working with you through our manager and our management team, so we thank you for that. The last highlight really on our communication center deals with, there will be an increase in our budget, and I think the manager may have mentioned this yesterday in his opening remarks, that is, with the enhancement of the radio and paging system, we need to add the additional towers to the system to provide the adequate coverage that the fire EMS community needs. So through the lease agreements that we've had to enter into, that's going to be about a $200,000 increase to the budget, that, again, that we've already come to you with, and have received permission to enter into those contracts. So that is an increase within our budget, but again, we really thank you for supporting us with our communication efforts. The last division that I want to mention is our emergency management planning division. This is the vision that every day, I guess a lot of people just think that, you know, this is really sort of all we do during the day, it's just emergency management planning. This is a really key component to ensure that when we go back to that first slide of the preparedness, the mitigation, the response, the recovery, we are not able to do those four missions without this division, because this is kind of the glue, if you will, within our department, and when we talk about response, especially with disaster-type responses. So in that division, we have one person, Ms. Angela Brown is with us this morning, she serves as our emergency management planner. And really, Angela is responsible for the overall hazard preparedness of the entire county by maintaining response plans and procedures, including what we term our emergency operation plan, the big book that we have, that if we have certain types of disasters or incidents, we can turn to that book, and it's almost like a checklist guide of making sure that certain things are addressed in our response. So it's important that we maintain that plan, as well as our partnerships with different agencies in working with exercises, trainings, to ensure that all of our responders are prepared to deal with whatever the type of situations that they may encounter. Because again, we think in the world of all hazards, you know, we could be, at one moment, we could be at a fire scene, the next moment, we could be at a train derailment, we could be preparing for traumatic activity, to hurricanes, it's just, it's all over the board, it's an all-hazardous approach. So it takes all of us working together, and it really starts with the funnel through this emergency management planning. So we really appreciate what this role does, to sort of, to help us continue to move forward. So having said all of that, let's talk for just a moment about the year in review. It's been an interesting year, folks, to say the least, in our world of emergency management. But hopefully, we've done okay as a team, because again, it takes all of us working together, from our elected officials, to our management team, to our fire EMS community, our other stakeholders, both at the local, state, and federal levels. It takes all of us working together. So we've had some successes this year, but those successes can be contributed, again, to everyone working together. If we go back to late August, early September, we had tropical storm Pramene to move through the area that created some issues for us. So we had plans in place to respond to that. Then, as you know, the Colonial Pipeline, we had the one rupture at the pipeline in Alabama, which created a fuel shortage. So we had to work through that situation locally to ensure that our emergency services agencies could continue to respond. Then we had another, a second near mishap on the Colonial Pipeline a week or so later. So we've had to ensure that we have plans in place, so that if something like this occurs in the future, we have contingency plans. That goes back to our emergency management planning, to make sure that we can address those needs, those issues. So we had, we'll say, 1.5 concerns with the Colonial Pipeline. Next, as you may recall, we had the lightning had a direct strike on our 911 tower located out off of County Home Road. Well, that knocked our communication system offline, and we had to go to our backup emergency communication system. Well, before we were able to get that fixed, the system went out really two more times. So we had a total of three system outages, but each time, you know, we were able to quickly address the issue. So we've been through some communication concerns with that. Also, as you may recall, we had the snow and ice event. At one point during this particular event, they were saying that we could get 10 inches of snow, and we may get a half-inch of ice. Well, that brings pretty much the community to a standstill. Well, it's the role of emergency management to ensure those essential emergency services, community agencies can continue to meet the needs of the community. So therefore, we have our plans in place to address things like that. We're very proud of our fire service that stood up and volunteered to go west to help with the wildfires that we had out west earlier in the year. Our department helped coordinate those departments in their response to and from western North Carolina. And as you may recall, the recent rains, we had, you know, the central part of North Carolina received six, seven inches of rain. Well, that water has to go somewhere, and unfortunately, it's downstream, and we just happen to be downstream. So we start contending with a potential flooding situation. So again, two weeks ago, we had to put plans in place, we had to stand up potential shelters in case we needed to evacuate folks from floodwaters. So again, that was another example of an event that occurred this year that we had to respond to. And we've had multiple hazardous materials mishaps, where we've had 18-wheelers carrying different types of materials that have been involved in accidents overturned, that we've had to respond and work with different environmental companies for cleaning up different types of hazardous material teams to help mitigate the situation. And of course, the last one on here, we all know too well, and that is Hurricane Matthew. Unfortunately, we're still dealing with Hurricane Matthew, and our department has the citizens are impacted by Matthew in the community as well. So, you know, Matthew is one that is ongoing, and I'm not sure if you're aware or not, but Hurricane Matthew, the name has actually been retired. So that's a name that will not be used again in future storms. It created enough devastation, excuse me, that the National Weather Service has decided to retire the name of Hurricane Matthew. So that's a name that we will not hear again. So I guess I could go on and on and on, but again, I just wanted to come before you this morning and say thank you for your support of our department as emergency management. You see, there's four divisions, and these four divisions are working really hard through partnerships to help keep the community safe, and to do what needs to be done on a moment's notice, 24/7, to maintain our state of preparedness with our partners. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Alan, I want to thank you for your leadership, and thank you for hitting the ground running and working together with other agencies and the county staff. We appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, sir. It's a team effort, thank you, though. Thank you.
With that, Commissioner Webb.
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment. First of all, thank you and your organization for all that you do to keep our community safe. And I would like to especially extend an appreciation to our EMS squads and our fire departments for all they do for our community. And I would like to doubly extend that appreciation to our fire departments, because, as you said earlier, we have 715 volunteers. Now, by volunteers for the fire department, that means we don't pay them. They volunteer their time, and I greatly appreciate them being willing to do that. Their lives are disrupted, they can be in church, they have to come out, they can be in a meeting, they have to come out, they can be at a family gathering. And when the sound is heard, they have to come out, and they willingly do that. So again, it would cost us a tremendous amount of money if we had to pay for those 715 volunteers. So again, I'd like to especially extend our appreciation to those guys and girls, those men and women, for what they do for our community.
Thank you, sir. They're very special, they do a great job, thank you for...
We have the Commissioner Webb with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I should just have a comment. Now, what I want to thank you is some liaison to the Fire Association. And since you've taken over, one complaint I don't get anymore is about communication. The departments feel like they're being heard, they feel like their concerns are making it all the way to the manager and to the board, and that they're being addressed, and the culture change. I mean, you have a good team, but a lot of that culture change is due to what you've brought to this organization, and I appreciate that. And they've had nothing but good things to say. And it's, you know, it's a tough group, and so when you're getting compliments, that's good work. So we appreciate it, and it's safe to answer my phone now.
Very good. But it's a team effort, it's taken all of us, including the board, and working together, but thank you.
Commissioner Webb.
Thank you so much for the good report that comes from the citizens. When it comes from the citizen, it's the greatest. And they have a lot of concern, because you have to go around about when you go to get emergency, respond to emergencies on O River Road. But the citizen, between you and the deputies, you all do a tremendous job, that they were saying, even the deputy has helped in coordinating some of the emergencies that you've had to have, especially with the death on O River Road. So I just wanted to say that when people say positive things, that means that the job you do is great. And I appreciate the quickness in which, or the minor changes that you may have adjusted that makes that happen, that make people feel comfortable with what they have to do when they need someone and they don't know what to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Webb.
I just want to thank you so much for your leadership, and I know you always say team effort, but there has to be a leader of a team, or a captain, or a coach, or whatever. And I sort of reiterate what Commissioner Webb said, there seems to be more of a satisfaction and an understanding that our volunteers, who are priceless, and I think that's a true word, priceless, and even our paid employees, all of them are priceless to us. And thank you for your leadership and guidance, and giving them an ear.
There is one place on State and Mear Road that you may need to evaluate how close the train goes to that house. Just maybe talk to the, because they stopped me one day, that was the only thing that I hear, but they were not complaining, they were just concerned. So it's down State and Mear Road, not far from the train, that station. The man, and it happened because we were talking about the station and the train keeping noise. But there's one place you may want to evaluate for a potential emergency, with train jumping the track. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Commissioner Webb.
Alan, I'd just like to mention that you took over a difficult job at a difficult time, and I think you've done a fine job, sir. And unfortunately, you're going to have that job as long as you want it.
He's saying that.
I appreciate that. It's, again, it's a team effort. You know, I have two wonderful people standing over my shoulder here that helps every day. We have, again, whether we're talking volunteer fire, our EMS community, our 911 center, it's truly a team effort, the support of the community, you know, the support and the leadership of the county manager, our deputy manager of finance helping us. So it's all of us working together. I appreciate the compliments, but it's really, it truly is a team effort, but thank you very much, thank you.
Okay. With that said, thank you very much, and appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have Animal Services, Michelle Whaley.
See if I have enough sense to find mine. Oh, I'm too short, I need Jan Stull. Okay. Good morning. I am Michelle Whaley, Director of Pitt County Animal Services, and I'm happy to be here this morning to kind of give you what's going on and what we've been doing with the animal services in Pitt County. Order of presentation, it's very short and sweet, which I'm sure you're going to like at this point, just who we are, some accomplishments, and looking ahead with challenges and some goals that I've set for it. Who we are, as you should be familiar with, our mission statement is to provide services which safeguard the public health and safety by supporting the education of our citizens on what responsible pet ownership looks like, the protection of our community's animals from cruelty and neglect, and the housing care and placement or humane resolution for that animal in our care. The different services that we provide are animal care and control, ordinance enforcement, public information and education, complaint and bite investigation, the abuse and neglect response, the housing of the strays, lost, unwanted animals, adoptions, reclamation, transfers, euthanasia, records and data, community outreach, and other educational programs. We do have an animal services advisory board, nickname is ASAP for short. This is a group of citizens representing the community and various animal welfare agencies throughout the county. The purpose of the board is to provide policy guidance to the animal services department and discuss current animal issues that are in our county. They also hear all the appeals of dangerous dog declarations, and the issues range from animal welfare to citizen protection, and then county animal nuisances. This is just kind of a flow chart of our staffing and where we are now. We have the director, we have an assistant manager, we have four full-time animal control officers, two administrative assistants, four full-time shelter attendants, two part-time shelter attendants, and then, of course, our volunteers. And I want to thank you, and I hope as I go along, and we talk about some of our data, when you added the different staffing positions, so we have true officers versus shelter, that it has made a positive impact. We have many, many partners, we have all the municipalities, as you're aware, there are 10 in Pitt County. Currently, there are three towns that we do contract services with, and that is Bethel, Simpson, and Gromsland. We have our nonprofit partners, which include Friends of the Pitt County Animal Shelter, Humane Society of Eastern Carolina, The Pet Food Pantry of Eastern North Carolina, Spay Today, Saving Graces for Felines, all of those different nonprofit groups you hear about in Pitt County we work well with. And then we have our business partners that you really saw during Hurricane Matthew, Stuff Up, and Pet Co. and Pet Smart. Next, we're going into our data and statistics. I'm just highlighting a few things for you this morning, but please know that I do have detailed charts and graphs, if you would, you know, if there's an issue that particularly interests you, I'd be glad to provide those for you. But last fiscal, last year, we took in 2,896 dogs and cats. 53% were dogs, 47% were cats. And then our expenditures ended up being the $718,685.41, and our cost per animal has been $248.16. Just some of the data I'm going to highlight is our animal intake. A lot of people always want to know where are the animals coming from in the county? So you'll see that Greenville is at 23.65%, unincorporated areas is 44.5%. The public brings in 26, about 26% on their own, and then you have Winterville and Aiden, which are our two highest municipalities. Okay, the live release rate, just to kind of show you all of our work over the years, I'm particularly proud of this slide. When we took over the shelter operations, the live release rate, which is the number of animals that get out of live, that come into our care and custody, was at 14%. So in the last 15 years, we have brought that up to 54%. It'll never be good enough for me, you know, that's a number we always want to see increase, but I'm very proud of the growth that we have made over the years. And then the dog bite distribution. Dog bites are always kind of a hot topic that people are interested in. Again, wanted you to see where those dog bites are coming from. They're kind of split equally between unincorporated areas and the city of Greenville. I'm pretty proud of that, and then you'll see the other municipalities and their percentages. And the total number of bites we had last year was 221 that were reported. Sadly, you know, you don't know how many don't report it, but that's what was reported that we investigated each and every one. So I want to talk about some successes. Our statistics are showing that the different programs that we're implementing and that we're trying are working. Last year was the lowest intake that we had and the lowest euthanasia numbers since we took over operations of the animal shelter in 2002. With our partners, we transferred out 691 animals, and I want to say thank you, I think when the commissioners passed the canine control ordinance, that was a good, smart move. And I think we're now at a point where the statistics are showing that that was needed and that it's working. and that it's working. And again, having that dedicated officer where the officers don't have to clean the shelter, and they can go ahead and get out in the field. Our dog bites off property are down 96 since 2014. Our dog trap requests are down. The number being caught in traps is down. And our stray animal number was down by 109. So, I do think we're going to keep seeing those numbers to the good, and that the canine control ordinance is effective and is working. And I'd like to thank you for going kind of towards that rough time and deciding if that was the correct thing to do. I do think it was the absolute correct decision. We sheltered over 200 animals in the two different facilities during Hurricane Matthew. We're in our fourth year with our East, with the East Carolina Dog Walking Fitness Class. Summer session started today. So, every session that ECU is offering classes, I'm happy to say that class is full and it's thriving. So, we're very proud of that. And we're going to continue to seek out grants to assist our citizens and with different services for them and their pets. So, don't really have a lot to talk about as far as budget requests. This year, my budget request remained in the current spending that's been available to us. We do think that's appropriate for what we're offering now to maintain our current level of services. Something that you are already aware of is Animal Services Advisory Board, last year, recommended an increase in intake fees. Last year, that was approved, and the intake fee went from $20 to $40 per animal that we received. Again, that recommendation was made that this budget year, starting July 1st, that that intake fee would go to $40 to $80. The reason they're recommending this is they feel like the true cost per animal that we're putting into each animal should somehow, you know, get back to us where we can, you know, not be putting so much out on our end. So, that is a current recommendation still from ASAP. So, looking ahead, I have a lot of goals. I'm always looking to see, always, I've learned to love data and how to interpret data and how to study data. So, ASAP recently re-looked at the strategic plan that was done several years ago and updated some goals. One of those goals that they set now is within two years for dogs and five years for cats is to euthanize zero animals for the reason of simply space and time. When I do my statistics, it will show you how many were put down because they were aggressive, how many were sick, how many were injured, and how many just because we couldn't continue holding that animal anymore. In February of this year, we actually, for the first time ever, did hit zero for dogs. I almost had to redo stats to make sure I wasn't looking at it wrong. It's going to take a lot of work to continue to make that happen, and we're committed to trying to make that happen. If they stay out of the shelter or we get them out alive, that's reducing our cost. If we're holding them less amount of days, that's in the big ball picture, reducing our costs. But statistics do show we have to address the community cat issues in Pitt County. Our cat statistics as well is bringing our numbers down. If we can appropriately look at different programs and address the cat issues in our county, I do believe our live release rate, you will see it go from the 50% range to 80 or 90%. In some communities, if you achieve 80 or 90% live release rate, that is considered a no-kill community. I think our citizens want that. I think they want us to keep working towards our goals. But the statistics blatantly point out that, yes, we impacted the canine control ordinance. We got, you know, separation of field staff and shelter staff. So, a lot of good things are happening in the dog population, but we simply must address the cat issues. I hope to work towards implementing a foster care program for both dogs and cats. Getting... That will also get the community more engaged, keep them out of our shelter. I was lucky enough to be awarded an apprenticeship. I got to spend a week in Charleston, South Carolina. They are a no-kill organization, to learn about a good foster program, how to make it work, you know, what are the problems associated in it and how to work through it. So, that is a goal. And we are developing, we revamped our volunteer program where they now have a true orientation. We're hoping to get these volunteers invested in more of a long term. So, eventually, I hope to find a way to do a volunteer retention. You know, people, sometimes it's just a handwritten note to make them feel appreciated. Sometimes it's a thank you. But I would like, I have some volunteers that give hundreds of hours a month. You know, I'd like to give them a little, you know, incentive, whether it's a water, you know, bottle or something. But to build in a true, and then maybe once a year, do a volunteer appreciation event for them. So, those are some of my goals. Again, I want to say that on the community cats, I've already started working on those issues, and you will be hearing about this, I think, soon at a Commissioners' meeting. We did work with Best Friends, which is a national organization, and they granted us $30,000. And the check was delivered to Kelly Dixon yesterday. I had it hand-delivered because I was nervous with that much money. But they have gifted us that money to work on the community cat issues. So, that's a start. You know, it's a way for us to get started, try to help our citizens. And also, a grant that we had received previously called Unchain Me. We will be building our first fence and pen for a citizen across the river on Sunday morning. And it's just nice to be able to have these funds to help citizens keep their animals. They're not bad pet owners. They've either fallen on hard times, or they're just struggling for whatever reason that may be. And it's nice to have this grant money to be able to go out into the community and assist them. So, I have a couple officers that are going to go out with me. And The Pet Food Pantry, we're partnering with them. And we're going to actually build our first pen for this person's dog. That way, the dog can stay safe, doesn't have to worry about it roaming at large and bothering other neighbors. So, we have a lot of good community outreach programs that we're now able to offer. So, the only other thing I'll say is y'all know we're going to have the expansion and renovation, which, again, I thank you for. We're really excited about that, to get our facility updated, where hopefully we won't spend so much money on maintenance. We can provide even more services, that the shelter will be a place that people want to come and bring their families. And there will be some drivers next year budget. I know this year, you're thinking, just let us get through this year, and we'll deal with next year. But you know, next year, with the expansion and renovation, there will be, you know, more equipment that's probably going to be needed, increase in supplies with more holding capacity, utilities, and so forth. And that's all I've got, unless anybody has any specific questions.
Michelle, I want to thank you for your guidance, your leadership through the process of working with your animals in Pitt County. And also, thank you for staying within the recommended budget that has been recommended by the Advisory Board as well as county. Some of you may not know, Michelle used to be with probation and parole. And she worked with adults, working, counseling, and taking care of adults. But it was a switch to see you from that to animals. But I see that you're doing a good job. We appreciate what you do.
I try. Thank you.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Michelle, can you explain the difference for me and the public and the Commissioners between a feral cat and a community cat?
The term is pretty much interchangeable, depending on, you know, what source you're listening to. A feral cat or a community cat could just be a cat that is, basically, people are providing care for the animal already. A feral is one that's not handled. It's just out there. They're giving it a food source, but it's never been touched. It's never interacted with people other than running up and grabbing food.
You can't pick it up.
You can't handle them. But they're good for rodent control, and they're good for several things. So, I knew I was getting this grant money. We actually, when citizens call in now complaining about cats, we've already started dialogue with the citizen. It takes a little bit more time on the phone with them. I've talked to three people recently, and I'll ask them, what is the cat doing, you know, that's upsetting you? There's some deterrence that we can use, and this grant money is going to allow us to buy deterrence that we can give to the citizens, go out there, put it out for them, to assist them? That would be a first step, you know, if it's just digging in their, you know, they want it out of their garden. They want it off their car. I had one lady towards Bethel area that thanked me profusely. I said, well, what are you feeding the cats? Yes, ma'am, I have to say I am. How long have you been feeding the cats? Two years. How about if we get them for you, try, help you trap them and fix them at no cost to you? Can we put them back out there? She's like, yeah, I struggled with calling you. Like, I didn't want to call you because I didn't want them killed, but I know they're going to keep having more babies. And she thanked me profusely. The officer went and picked up two cats yesterday, and she, again, thanked the officer. Am I realistic to know not everybody's going to be okay with that idea? Yes. And there are citizens that we're going to have no choice but to provide them a trap and catch them and bring them to the shelter. And then, what happens, happens. But three people in the last three days have all thanked us and are excited. And they're actually, some of them are doing the transporting to the spay neuter clinic. So, we're just loaning them a trap, and they're doing pretty much all the labor that's associated with it. Again, this is not an immediate Band-Aid. You won't see the results statistically for a little bit of time, kind of after in 2010, when the Commissioners did approve the mandatory spay neuter. You know, about year five, you started really seeing the effect of that. But it is working in communities such as Waco, Texas, that is much poorer of a community than we are. It's working in Jacksonville, Florida. I've watched probably every webinar out there on, you know, how to work with cat issues. But we simply, we could build a whole shelter to house cats. Housing them, we're not going to get ahead that way. This is much cheaper than even doing euthanasia of them. And there's also what they call the vacuum effect. We may trap a couple, but new ones just move in. So, if you're not fixing everything out there, you're not really getting ahead. We have several people that we've tracked that call, get a cat trap. Three months later, same citizens calling, asking for a cat trap again. So, I know it's a drastic new way of thinking, but I feel like we've got to try something new in addition to what we've been doing. Because in 15 years, we're not getting ahead on the cats. The stats show it. We're pretty much an Uber service. We're going out there, we're picking them up to euthanize them. And it's not slowed down in 15 years. So, I'm excited to try something new. Again, I'm going to be realistic with it. But I've already been a little bit surprised on how many citizens, just a few I've talked to in the last couple of days, when I've kind of given them option A, B, C, how many are choosing this option. So, I'm very excited about it.
Thank you very much, Michelle.
Commissioner Garrett?
I just wanted to ask you a follow-up question on your foster care program. Now, is that, will that, will the foster care home receive any compensation for being a foster?
They won't not.
Okay. I know when we think about our social services and foster homes, they do receive, but in this case, they will not, which would be strictly volunteer on their part.
It would be. And a lot of the, what I learned, especially in Charleston, is you, we get a lot of donated food and supplies. I mean, anytime we need something, we do have a pretty good community support base. I would like to support them if we have it on hand with food or cat litter or so forth. But the first program I'd like to try is what they call an adoption ambassador. And actually, when that person comes into foster, they're providing the care. They're taking the animal, you know, to try to get it a home. That animal never comes back to the shelter. They're committed from day one to find that animal a new home themselves. That's kind of the first kind of ease into it I'd like to try, because the ultimate goal is, for us, what would work best is that animal get out of the shelter alive and not have to come back to try to get, for us to place. And Charleston's, but they have over 5,000 animals in foster care. It just blew my mind. And that's exactly what they do. If they get low on food, or they put a shout-out on Facebook, social media can be good or bad, and then people just drop it off, and then they tell their fosters, you can come, you know, we have donated food. So, I don't think it would cost, I'm hoping in the long run, it's going to save the county from housing days, staff time, et cetera. So, that's something I definitely, that's kind of on my bucket list to try next.
Sounds like a great program, and sounds like it surely has potential of saving the county money.
That's what I hope.
Thank you.
Commissioner Webb?
Michelle Wayley, I'd like to thank you for all you do, being away from the house alone. And I live between two residents. One loved dogs and the other one loved cats. But until the one who died, I did not know she had so many cats. And maybe when you are with your group, you can think about when someone dies, what happens to the animals? Because that's what happened with the cat. After a while, where are all these cats coming from on my car? And I just couldn't figure it out. So, then, I started walking around in the neighborhood, who got all these cats that's coming in my yard? And I found out it was the lady who died who had all the cats. And so, and the cats and the dogs didn't get along, and it started having problems between the neighbors about the dog biting the cat. And so, anyway, I want to thank you so much for what you do about the cats. But that's something to consider when the owner dies.
Correct.
The cats started doing everything.
And hopefully, we can get that under control before we're in that situation, because one cat can produce up to 50-something kittens a year, just one cat. So, you can have one or two. This one lady that we're recently working with, there's only two out there right now off Old River Road. I'm like, let's get them. You know, let's go ahead and get... She goes, everyone thinks it's my cat because it follows me to the mailbox, but it's kind of everybody's cat in the neighborhood, and that's where the term "community cat" comes from. So, again, it's trying to get them early. And then, my next hope is, one, they'll see my officers in a different light. You know, it helps with community support and engagement, but it also, and it shows them we care. You know, we get accused of not caring because we do have to euthanize animals. But it also, if we can get them early, before they multiply, before they're on your car, before they're in your garden and flowerbed. I get it. People take great pride of their property. They don't want it to be disrupted by the neighbor's cat. So, hopefully, that's kind of the next piece of the puzzle, is going out in our communities and talking, especially the highly congested ones, the mobile home properties, and doing the walking and talking and doing an assessment and figuring out, how can we attack it? It may take working with the vet to do one whole day of nothing but cats. You know, can they open an extra day? Can they dedicate one day to us? It's going to take, again, we're going to have to work our way through it, but I think we can get there.
I have one question. Are the cats, when you put them in the foster home, for instance, that what you're projecting to do more of? Do you spay them before they get?
Yes. They would be fully vetted.
I figured you did, but I think that's, you know, the answer, because a lot of people are willing to take a cat if that's already been done. So...
Right. Yeah, we'll have the spay neuter, the microchip, the rabies, all the vaccinations. If they're old enough, the heartworm testing, all of that will be done, just as if somebody came into the shelter to adopt. We wouldn't put them in a home.
And Michelle, I've been here since you started working there. And I think we are at a whole, almost at a different stratosphere as far as what we have done, as far as our animal shelter, as far as Pitt County. And I'm not sure that all the citizens understand that this is not always funded in all counties. It is not required to be done. So, I think Pitt County does a great job, but you've done a remarkable job. And thank you.
I think the key is to not be afraid of change. You have to be progressive, and you have to keep pushing forward, and you have to stay up on education.
But everybody doesn't always do that.
I don't like watching webinars necessarily, but it's important.
Just accept that compliment and move on.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle. And we have no other comment. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
With that, Scott, do you have any comments or concerns that you want to bring?
And tomorrow's agenda for the third-day workshops, you will have Public Health, DSS, the Commission and Visitors Bureau, and just remember to hold Friday open in case you need to come back to wrap things up.
I have nothing in my binder for the social services and the public health. It's blank.
You'll receive those when they come to...
Okay.
With that said, we will recess until tomorrow morning at 8:30. Thank you very much.